All right. Well, being to order. We have a shared vision in the Ferneal School District, provide excellence for every student so that each will reach their greatest potential. We're always happy to have parents and other community members at our meetings. Thank you to the members of the public who have joined us. As a reminder, school board meetings and work sessions are meetings of the board held in public. Providing an opportunity to observe the board's discussions and actions. In effort to conduct official board business, we ask that the audience be respectful and refrain from questions, comments, and unnecessary noise while board conducts the meeting. There's an opportunity for some comment tonight. The board looks forward to those to hearing from those who signed up. I will share some reminders when we get to that portion of the meeting. Also, please note that all board meetings are live streamed and posted on the school board area of the district. So we will start with our citizenship reward, Miss Johnson.
So um it's are my pleasures the principal at Ferneal Middle School. This is a special award to me because it goes to Thomas Larson. And Thomas is special to me because I was a principal at the Need Elementary School when he started kindergarten. Michelle Marshall was his teacher. And so I got to see his kindergarten promotion and then a couple of months I got to see his eighth grade promotion in the month high school. So that's pretty cool. Um, we went through quite a few names when we were talking about this as a staff. And we hit on Thomas and for every other student we talked about, there was somebody out of the 25 people of our staff. Oh no, he's not great for me or no, he's not really a leader. No, nothing. When Thomas's name came up, it was like an immediate. Yeah, that's it. That's our outstanding student. No disagreements, no, no comments, anything. A hundred percent unanimous vote. Um, so Thomas Larson is among the best and the brightest eighth grade students at Ferneal Middle School. He is a joy to have in the building. He has been a straight A student since his first day of sixth grade. I think it's more A pluses than anything else. And when it wasn't an A or an A plus, it was a passing grade or there was nothing else there at all. Um, his teachers and other students see him as a leader in the classroom. In band, Thomas has become one of the leaders of our band two class. Substitute teachers have told me that they appreciate that Thomas can lead the classroom. The music teacher is absent. Um, our music director, Mr. Cannon, reports that he is always focused and ready to learn. His track coach, Katie Miller, says that Thomas is a great leader on the track team and an extraordinary athlete himself. His social studies teacher, Mr. Davis, says that Thomas is a hard worker, respectful, takes pride in his work, and is always nice to other students. This PE teacher, Mr. Franklin, appreciates the fact that Thomas always asks him how his day is doing, is going, and how he is doing. Um, in a few months, Thomas will be tackling his first year of high school. If he tackles high school with the same focus, energy, and drive that he has middle school. We can't wait to see what he will accomplish. It's gonna be amazing. Thank you, Thomas, for being a great student at the middle school.
Colonel Brad will definitely within the fight. And you're more than welcome to stay, but you don't have to. There are a few more chairs over there. All right. Moving on, we have no public comment tonight. And so we opened the public renewal hearing for the Westland Charter School and for stuff to the presentation.
Hi, so I'm Darcy Solar. You've got the director of Wesley and we appreciate you taking the time tonight to listen to us and some of the things we have to say about Wesley renewal. So I'm gonna start. Um, we typically do a board presentation every year in February to the board. Do it now. Parents must over and over again. Um, so actually, when we normally present to you all, I present data and facts surrounding student achievement. Graduation rates, attendance, and things like that. But tonight I wanted to present to you a few stories, stories that embody the essence of Wesley Charter and the profound impact it has on individual lives. Albert Einstein once said insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. Well, Wesley is a departure from a different choice and doing things a little bit differently, hoping for a different result for kids because the standard school or the typical brick and mortar school wasn't working for them. So consider a student from last year who had dropped out of high school. He was facing immense responsibility of caring for a terminally ill parent. School was not a priority and attendance at West Lane was paratic at best. Our dedicated counselor, however, reached out regularly, finding ways with teachers to help him complete the necessary work to graduate from high school. It was not in a conventional four years or even five years. It took six years, but he didn't. He finished. We informed him that he was done and offered him the opportunity to walk in graduation with our students. Tears streamed down his face as he said, I thought I lost that opportunity forever. Another story is that of a girl who had never seen anyone in her family graduate from high school. She herself dropped out halfway through her senior year. Following year, her, what would be her fifth year, she came to Westline Charter and staffed worked tirelessly with her, providing support and opportunities, and it was exhausting for all, including her. But she became the first person to not only graduate high school and her family, but to enroll in a community college. Or the boy who was on track to graduate, but the summer of his junior year got a full-time job and didn't want to give up that job. He liked the money. He needed the money, but he couldn't go to school full-time and work eight to five every day. Wes Lane gave him the opportunity to do both and he graduated on time. So we do things a little bit differently. We have a little more flexibility than a traditional school can sometimes offer. And that choice for some kids is the key to their success. Numbers and statistics and data undoubtedly have their place in assessing performance of educational institutions. However, behind those figures are people, real human stories that breathe life into the metrics that we present. At Wesley, we understand the importance of both and the quantitative and qualitative aspects of data, how it plays into our work educators. We have systems in place designed to help achieve those goals and improve things like attendance and graduation rates. However, we continue to recognize that within those systems, we have individual students. One of the strengths of Westside Charter is our small size. We're small enough to pay close attention to the individual students to see where their general systems may not be fulfilling their needs and tailor our approach. As we continue to work to improve our overall statistics, we ask for your continued support. Recognize that we are a choice, a different option for kids, and our goals are not just about the abstract improvements, but about transforming their lives as individuals. We're dedicated to fostering an environment where each student's story contributes to the collective success of Wesley. And then tonight we have several people here that want to speak, so we'll start. Amanda, who is a parent.
Hey, everybody. My name's Amanda. I am the parent of three school age children in our district ages six, nine, and 15. Today I want to talk about my 15 year old. A few of you may know him. His name is Tucker. Um, Tucker is Tucker. He, as a child, was always, as a young child, he was always exemplary when it came to academics. He was reading fluently at three and a half. He was doing double-digit addition subtraction by four. And so when he hit kindergarten, it was wheels up, let's go. Um, Tucker was diagnosed with severe ADHD around age six, which he was always a busy little boy. It is what it is, but he didn't portray your typical signs of ADHD. Tucker's not the kid that's bouncing off the walls and causing trouble in the classroom. In fact, he's typically the one sitting quietly in the back reading a book, hyper-focused, doing something that has absolutely nothing to do with the lesson being taught. He's also the kid that can quote you 50 different facts about absolutely none. He's a trivia genius. Um, he was always exemplary in school all the way through, straight A student and eligible for tag programs all the way through grade school. We moved back to the district in fifth grade. He attended Almira Elementary. He loved it here. Had a great time. Can you imagine my surprise when I walked into the first parent-teacher conference in the Ferneal Middle School in sixth grade and found my genius child was failing every single class? Every single class, even PE, he was failing PE. It wasn't that he wasn't smart enough. That's not the issue. Tucker's ADHD has a lot to do with lesser known symptoms. He suffers from time blindness. He can get completely absorbed in something and it'll be four hours later and he has no idea that time has passed. He's super introverted. He hyper focuses. And he has extremely lowered executive function. He cannot prioritize what is more important. So if anybody has ever tried to set seven projects at the same time and get them all done simultaneously, it's difficult. That's how he processes multiple classes. When there's too much work and you can't figure out what to do first, he shuts down. We struggled through sixth and seventh grade. Then there was COVID. There was that whole situation. And I knew going into freshman year of high school, he was gonna have the same struggles. We were gonna have four more years of constantly having to get on to him with, are you caught up in this class? Are you caught up in this class? Are you caught up in this class? And it was a battle. Every day of middle school was a battle. So I went a very untraditional route. I specifically requested that he be able to start West Lane Tech as a first day freshman. And I was granted that. And I'm very thankful Tucker has completed every single course, two courses at a time, mind you, for six week sessions, just his speed. He can focus on two set things. He can get them done. He can check that box. He can get it off the list. It's on to the next subject. It's perfect for him. Perfect for his mentality. He has a B average and I was informed, now, pardon me if I'm wrong, with Mr. Barry. He's the only student that has completed every course in a timely fashion since the day he started. He's never had to ask for an extension. He's never had to ask for an extension on any projects. He's been able to focus on those two classes, get them finished. He's averaging a B. He's set for on-time graduation. And he didn't have to go into West Lane Tech trying to catch up. He got to start from day one, and I think that has a lot to do with his success. So I'm personally thankful that he has an option where he's not forced into a social situation where he's anxious the entire time and he gets lost in the back of the classroom because he's quiet. You'll never notice he's there. He's easy to forget unless you talk to him about Star Wars. Or whatever he's decided to unleash his fury on that week. But schools like West Lane Tech give kids like my child who has every possibilities to succeed. They give him the opportunity to put that foot forward and not get lost in the busyness of public school. For a lot of people, high school is about socialization and sports and dances and all those fun things that a public high school can offer. I was that person. I played varsity sports. I know what public high school's like. I had a blast. It's not for him. He fits right in at West Lane. I get weekly communication with teachers. I can walk in anytime. They're great. They know my name. Every staff member in that facility knows my child's name, which is not always the case. And I'm just very thankful that we have the opportunity.
So I just, I just have a question. Um, does Tucker go to West Lane Tech?
He does. He elects, well. And we refer to Tucker as a tiny Sheldon Cooper. He's very much a person of habit and ritual. Um, he attends on, he used to attend on Thursdays because they had D and D sessions after class, but now he goes Fridays. He has one day a week where he dedicates himself to go and be with his teachers and then the other four, he elects to work remotely.
Thank you.
Now I'd like to introduce Nick Pfeiffer, who is a former student of Wesley.
Thanks, Ellen. So I graduated in, I think we just figured out between 19 and I was going to Lamont High School at the time. And from freshman year, really from my kindergarten, I was really bad at reading, terrible comprehension. I was failing classes left and right. I showed up every day, did all my homework and was at high school at Lamont. I stayed with my teacher until five, six, seven o'clock at night. There was one teacher that stayed with me until about 7:30, then he'd leave. So I was like always going above and beyond, just trying to pass my test. And then my freshman year, they said, we need to get you a 5000 plan. Took him two and a half years to get me that plan. I got that plan and I went through a semester of school and I failed four out of the seven classes that I was doing. Went in, sat down, called the teachers and they said, Nick, you just don't pay attention in class. Uh, you're not trying hard enough and you just goof around. And the other three teachers were like, yeah, Nick, you have problems. You need to get help. So half, almost half the teachers refused to help me. And I'm like, you know what? That's it. Cause I failed these classes and I'm not on track to graduate. So I got on Google and I was like Charter Schools near me, found West Lane, parked in my truck, left the school, drove out there and I was like, hey, I have these problems. I'm not doing so well at West Lane or at Lamont. Can I come here? Like, yeah, sure. What are your problems? Well, I'm failing all this. They're like, well, how far are you behind? I'm like, I'm pretty far behind. I'm not gonna graduate. And they're like, well, no worries. We can get you all taken care of if you, if you come out here. So I drove back to Lamont and I, uh, it sent my transcript time. Showed back up out there and the principal saw the transcript come across the back of the chair. He goes, Nick, what is this? We got your transcript request. I said, oh, I'm, I'm going to another school. What do you mean? Well, I got some better opportunities somewhere else. And she goes, you know, by going out there, you'll never achieve anything, never have anything. You'll never be successful. And uh, there's, there's no purpose of you going there. I said, that's your opinion? Fine with me. I'm out of here. So I went out there and though it took me a couple, or an extra year to graduate. I got a job at a video production company. That was like my dream to work for. So here I am like doing high school online, sixth floor downtown Eugene. I had my own office. I was running a crew under me. Like it was awesome, right? And I'm like, this is the life. And then my super senior year, because I couldn't graduate the standardized test that was in place at the time. So I, I still couldn't graduate while I was at West Lane. That kind of involved me in the super senior year. And then I was behind a little bit on classes because I was just so upset at that. Um, but then I started my own business while I was at West Lane and I got flown out to Spain and it's projects out there. It's like a flexibility for me to be able to go online and run a business, all attended high school and then graduating. It took me next year. Like, it's pretty awesome. So I don't know like exactly what the meeting's about and what you guys are considering about West Lane. Flexibility that it has for students is absolutely incredible that no other high school could have done. Like if I would have stayed at Lamont, I would have just dropped out and I would have never, I mean, the principal would have been right about that. Like, I probably just wouldn't have not paid anything. But though I can still figure out another avenue for my education and be able to go out to Westline Tech, like that was a big saving grace for me. So that's a, I think that's all I needed to say.
One more student, Amber. Um, I was gonna start off like this because I, when I first moved here, I, it was my eighth grade year. It was kind of the best and worst year to join. I started at Ferneal Middle School and COVID immediately hit that year. I started my freshman year. I tried going through Almira through their options program. It did not work at all for me. It was too, it was the most simplest form that they could have done because it was a surprise to everyone. So I struggled and I had breakdowns and I could not figure it out. Then uh, round two, maybe a month or so. Um, I moved in to West Lane and they helped me figure everything out. Their whole team was always super supportive, made it a safe space where I could understand and learn easier. I have very much high social anxiety and a like high functioning ADHD that is diagnosed and it's, has made things in public school a little hard at times, but even though I pushed through it. I currently am at Almira, but I still, those years have helped me and I still do summer school at Wesley Tech and that's what's made me have the opportunities to be where I'm at, where I can graduate early and go see colleges, see these things out alongside being just a good, good, almost straight A student alongside just all around having their support in not only education, but also athletics and things like that.
And then our final speaker is the chairman of the board at Wesley.
Well, thanks for the time. Thanks for the opportunity. I had a bunch of stuff to say, but honestly, I can't say anything better than what Nick said. If that does not sell you on West Lane Tech School, you're in the wrong business. I'm just gonna tell you, you shouldn't be on the board. Because there's a young man who people doubted, said was gonna be nothing. Was gonna be a statistic and he ran his own business. And did you catch where he flew to?
Spain.
And without the option of West Lane Tech, that young man never achieves his dream ever. And so, I mean, we have kids like that. Before, before I retired, I retired from the sheriff's office after a whole bunch of years. My last gig was out here in Venice, so I spent a chuckle of time in the schools. So I've had the privilege to speak to a whole bunch of our youngsters from West Lane Tech that you had never seen in your school. Whether it's family issues or I'm taking their mom and dad to prison or I'm taking their mom and dad to jail once a week. It's a safe space for kids. They're getting great, great education and now we're blessed with the GED program. Thank you so very much because it's all about giving our kids a foot up, a step up, right? That's, we all want them to be successful. So I think that, that's it right there. Why would we take an option away from our young kids? I mean, these are walking, walking examples. And that's what I gotta say, cause I, yeah, after listening to Nick, I mean, that's, that says it all right there. That is a perfect, perfect place for, not everybody, but it happened with a lot of kids. So hopefully you see the value in what our teachers are doing, what our directors doing, what our students are doing, what their families are doing. And don't take that option away.
So thank you again for your time and yeah.
I wanna butt in and say one more thing too. The curriculum that they're able to provide with me and go on my strong suits was like next to none. Like, okay, what are your skills? What are you good at? How can we leverage that to your curriculum and help you like get the same requirements? We need to check the boxes, but still get you to pass. Like the flexibility that they have per student is next to nothing. And to be able to create classes for you specifically to get through is next to nothing. So, yeah.
Thank you all. Uh, all right. So we will close the public renewal hearing for Westland Charter School and as I said, with the other folks, if you want to stay around, that's great. We will most likely make a decision next month on renewal. So if you don't want to stay around, you can take off. Next is our 2020 bond update. We have Mr. Rose on Zoom with us. I think he's gonna hit on a few things. Some updates.
All right. Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Great. Okay. Would you like me to share our outline or put it up on the screen? I can do either here. Why don't I go ahead and share?
We put it up. You're good.
Oh, you did? Okay. Good. Fantastic. Okay. So this will be real brief tonight because uh, you submitted, your district submitted for the state awesome grant, $6 million grant that was submitted Friday morning and I've been pestering the state today and just they will not have any answers until tomorrow or Wednesday. So uh, we won't be able to give you that information until later. But what we've done is we've, is we've broken out the needs that were identified by the long-range planning committee. And then with some slight adjustments based on the surveys that went out to the community and then uh, resharing that with the committee to make sure that those adjustments still align with their intentions. And what we've done is broken that out by different categories. And then try to get some specificity to the projects because that seemed to be a question about, well, what exactly are we going to be doing? And because things aren't designed, we're giving level specificity that makes sense uh, based on the conversations with the committee. We'll see that these are broken out by safety, mechanical, athletics, and each of those is incorporating a budget associated with that. Uh, we also have educational projects that are more directed directly towards uh, educational spaces, classroom curriculum. And then we have energy projects, restroom remodels, uh, improvements to your parking areas. And then lastly, a couple of site work projects. Uh, right now, the project budget total is looking at 21.3 million. And that is all in. Uh, that is not just construction cost, but that's a budget that should support hiring the designers you need, the professional services, uh, all the utilities permits furnishings for the classroom remodels uh, and a 10% contingency. So that's all in at the 21.3 million. Right now, that project budget total reflects a 15.6 million dollar bond, uh, which would, uh, is estimated at the $2.20 bond rate that you have historically had. Uh, it will be sold over two sales. So a larger sale at the beginning, then a smaller sale uh, the year after. Again, that's to keep that tax rate down. And that 15.6, there's a capitalized interest piece, a small piece that comes off the top of that. About 300 Ks, you can see the delta there. And then this, it assumes a $6 million awesome grant again that was applied for Friday. So that brings us to the 21.3. Again, you're taking out the capitalized interest. Uh, we have not incorporated any energy utility grants at this point, just because those are volatile year to year and you don't want to count on those uh, and have those be reduced. And they were significantly reduced during the COVID period. So our plan is as soon as we hear about the awesome grant, whether or not Ferneal just spent a has the grant committed to them or not, uh, we will then uh, if, if it's committed, then we'll come back to the board in January with the recommendation to go out for a bond in uh, May of 24. Uh, if we do not get the awesome grant or we receive only a partial grant, then the plan would be to reconvene with the committee or at least share with the committee uh, the results of that and then look at, do we pare this down or do we defer it to November? So we'll look at a couple of different options there, but we want to make sure that we pare it down in a manner that's consistent with it, with the committee's recommendations. And so our intention would be to have a recommendation at the board meeting in January, either to uh, proceed as outlined here or some pared down revision or to defer until November. And then you would reapply for an awesome grant. If you did not receive one this time, you could reapply for that awesome grant July 15th. That's the other uh, application. But that'll take any questions.
So my recollection is that there is a difference in the May and the November elections. Uh, can you, can you talk, talk to that? This is Andrea.
Yeah, yeah. You, you mean in terms of passage rate?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Um, May typically in Oregon, we go back about 20 years, 22 years with data. Um, May elections typically are bond elections. We look clearly at school bonds. Uh, not including levies, but just school bonds. We typically see in May about a 58 to 59% passage rate for bonds that go out in May. So, you know, better than half. In November, that drops down to about a 52% passage rate. So still above half, but a bit lower. In November, that drops down to about a 52% passage rate. So still above half, but a bit lower and some of the, that rationale may be, you know, one, there's, there tends to be more uh, on the ballot in November than May, and as such, it kind of gets lost in the noise. And two is you just got your property taxes in, uh, late October. And so people are looking at property taxes and saying, you know, wow, I need to make a decision here. And so you see a little bit, um, more, uh, a little bit of a drop in November than May.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, um, what, what I'm not seeing on this is, um, any prices to go with it?
Any prices to go with it? So we have budgets for each of the categories. So, uh, for instance, the education, we're showing just a little below 5.4 million. Uh, we haven't broken it out by individual project. We did the initial estimating or the initial budgeting. Uh, but as a, uh, as an overall scoping document, we've uh, broken it out by category and incorporated those budgets. And that would be how you would carry a post bond. So you would have multiple projects that would be education based or athletics based, and they would have an overall budget. And then they would be, uh, designed and bid out to be within those, those sub budgets.
All right. Any other questions? Thanks, Scott.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to monthly items, um, approval of last month's minutes from the both the work session and the regular meeting.
I need that we approve the work session and regular session dated November 2023.
Motion the second to approve the work session and the regular session minutes. Any other discussion?
I have something. So on the work session on item number four, it stated that we were talking about the community involvement and that there were, um, comment boxes used before. And the superintendent was going to go ahead and look and see how have they been used and have they been used to your capacity? So that is my question.
Yeah, we, I think there was one bill, I email all the building principals. I kind of misremembered when we were talking about this. Those comment boxes were really used for students. You know, staff of the building, it's kind of the thing students use. Uh, so each building has one. Um, maybe there was one that couldn't find theirs. Um, but as far as like, you know, not that, not that a parent or someone from the public couldn't come in the office and put something in the comment box. We have one in the foyer, the district office, but at the building level, they were really about students putting things in about whatever their requests were. So it wasn't really a, well, definitely wasn't used as a, as a community outlet.
And did anybody talk to them? Was it something that was used?
Yeah, it was used. The, the old superintendent, it happened a couple of superintendents, those went out and the administrative assistant that was in Michelle's job, Ms. Moore, she would go around and get them all and then copy them. And I think send them to the building principals around here's the things that were in your box. I didn't like lunch or asking that needs to be longer, at least things like that. So that's, that's how it was used.
So there is somebody that's already picking those up?
Now, now they're not really being used. They're still out, but I just don't know that, well, either not out at every building. And the ones that are out, we haven't checked them in a long time. Like the district office, I went to look at ours after that meeting. There was nothing. Other than some garbage. Wrapping there or something. Um, so I don't think it's really something people promote. Um, not that we couldn't, uh, but again, it would really be about the you know, an offer, a way for students to provide you that best question. And not in this group section.
And then, um, in the main meeting. So in the main meeting, um, so, um, but there was a comment on item 10C that the committee put through, um, from the selection for the board, for the book, that book resolution committee. This is the main meeting, 10C. On the instructional materials committee. Uh, the, the committee put forward for approval includes the high school administrator, a media specialist, two parents, one name suggested by the original complainant and the other name suggested by the district, one high school teacher, a staff member who is not teaching the book, and two students selected by the student leadership class. So during that last board meeting, the question was asked, is this a balanced board? And the answer was yes. What I would like to know is how was that a balanced board?
I don't know that I referred to it as balanced, but what we tried to do was make it balanced to the friends that, I mean, the kids choose. So, um, I don't know how, we just followed the policy. The student leadership class selects the two kids. That's how we went there. An administrator, it made sense to use administrator from your school that it was at. So we used the high school principal. We only have one media specialist. So we used her. So the only real, you know, place where we had choice was these parent assignments. So I reached out to the original of parent that had the concern about the book or wanted to, wanted to have the discussion on it and asked her for a representative. So they got to pick one. And then the other one, I reached out to someone that I had known had been involved, uh, teaching um, Oba groups in our schools. Uh, and was a supporter of books. I reached out to that parent. He agreed. So that's how the committee was made up.
So my own concern, and I don't, I'm not disputing it at all, at all. I have no problem with it at all. My only concern is that in my view, it looks to me like the, the committee was put together as they should have been with a principal, a media specialist, teacher, two community members and two students. But when thinking about the board, it, to me, I'm feeling like it was one neutral possibly. Five that were for the book, and I'm, I'm using this for and for and against loosely, just for lack of better words. I'm going to use other words in a minute. That's going to be the same thing. But so there was one neutral five that were for the book and one that was against the book. And I don't, I don't call that a balance, but I don't call it a balanced committee.
Well, we followed the board policy to select the committee. So.
So you, you, I got that and I agree with that. Okay. But I still, when I asked if it was a board, if it was a balanced board, because we were given the names that night, we were given the names Monday night and we had to approve it Monday night. And that's why I asked the question. As long as it was a balanced board, I would have been totally fine. A balanced board would consider four to three.
Yeah, I just don't know how you would. First of all, I think anybody on this, on a topic like this probably has a pretty good inkling of what they're thinking when they go into the committee. But if that wanted to be a part of our board policies, what do you think about this? And try to get three or four people that think one way and three or four people the other way. I suppose we could write our policy like that. The way, you know, the way we selected the committee was not only 100% in line with the policy, I tried to take into account. Right. We could have just named two parents. We could have handpicked students, but we tried to follow the policy. The letter of the law.
Was it ever asked to any of these people? How do you feel about this book?
No.
Have you read the book?
I think they were charged, you know, Miss Vanderkar reading the book.
But, but that was after they were on the committee. Anybody on the committee had to be supported. Okay. So when we're putting the committee together and it's the board that had to approve it, okay?
Well, the board didn't have to approve it that night. I mean, you could have voted no. And then we would have went back and approved the committee the next time.
But see, the thing is, the question was asked, is it a balanced committee? And no, I think, I think, I think what I actually said was, it sounds like the committee I don't know. So I'm paraphrasing, but what I think that I said was, it sounds like every attempt has been made to make the committee balanced and I moved to move the committee as recommended, but the superintendent was asked directly. Because that was my one big concern. I believed wholeheartedly that you would have gone right down policy and done exactly what policy said. But I really needed to know if it was balanced.
And I have no, I mean, I'm not going to ask people to vote and make a decision. How would I know that it's balanced? Ask them, which way are you going to vote on this ahead of hearing all the material and from the folks? So.
Well, this is before anything happened. So yes, you can have a small discussion with them.
Yeah, that would seem inappropriate to me for me to ask them their opinion ahead of putting them on a committee. Then it might influence whether, you know, Gary's opinion. So we just followed the policy. Students select year two. We selected the principal. I wanted to get differing parent views. We got those on the committee. Certainly if the board wants to look at how this committee is put together in the future and change the board policy, I'd be open to doing that. We'd follow whatever changes we adopted.
Okay. Thank you.
I could add one thing. We named one teacher and they had asked us to pick another one. So we did change one of the teachers that we named to one that was different. So I feel like, um, we tried to, we only have some, you only have one of me, right? And student government, I do not know how they fit.
We, uh, students, the ones that wanted to, you know, want to volunteer, they don't, they said, yeah, we do it, you know, whatever. Um, then leadership at some, we had a, you know, we had a quick discussion over it and then you had a vote. And we voted on the two students that want, they were both sophomores at the time. They both read the book as freshmen. They both did it. And how they voted, I don't know. But yeah, no, we definitely, we had a vote and those are the tissues that got voted to do it.
I really feel like we followed the, the policy. What I remember is we talked about the two, the two, um, community members and that I don't know that superintendent Carpenter had to have the complaint that she was one and he chose one. And that's the part that I thought we were talking about was even. And maybe I just misunderstood the comments.
So I, I can put this into a example for you. If you have five people on a committee. Okay. And even though you're going down policy and you're getting exactly what you need to have. If you have seven people, seven people on the committee, five of whom are republic, two of them are Democrat, how's it going to go? Vice versa, five of them are Democrat, two are Republican. And that's why the balance was so important to me. So this is, this is fine. So what we can do is we can just, um, talk about it and policy.
Yeah, I, I think I'm a little bit challenged with understanding how we would know openly go out and ask a person what their thoughts and processes around a particular subject and then select them. Wouldn't that have more of a bias? In, in the fact that they are like this person because they say this or I dislike this person because they say this and you the, the openness of just selecting someone without going through the process of saying which side are you leaning towards, leave you a little bit more open in my opinion. And, um, part of what you mentioned with the numbers, whether you were being factual or not, saying you only had, we only had one person against it. But the parent who wrote a complaint was given the opportunity to choose someone. So I would imagine that parent is going to choose someone who most likely is aligned with her views. So potentially there would be two there. Again, we cannot tell the students how they're going to vote or how they should vote. So I find that a little bit concerning that you want us to go down the road of inquiring or superintendent inquiring about people's view, because at some point in time, someone else is going to complain that he only chose this person because they agreed to this side of the argument.
But here's the thing, if we have so, and I absolutely agree with that. I don't know what the, what the answer is. And that's why I'm putting this up the other day. Is if you have even a neutral, a balanced board of four to three, then at least you have a committee that you know is not going to be able to sign.
You don't know that.
I guess I, I would hope that nobody on the committee, principal Vanderkar included, came to the committee thinking, I'm deciding this way. If I would have been on that committee, I would have came to that. I certainly wouldn't have sat in there thinking, I'm voting this way. I would have wanted to listen to everyone, take into account what was said, what was discussed, what other people's thoughts and ideas were, and then made a decision. So I hope the seven people that come ahead of time wouldn't say, I'm voting this way, I'm voting that way. I want them to go through the process. They met for almost four hours. Um, so they took it seriously. I think they, um, you know, the, the complainants, I, I, I refer to this complaint that they weren't, they don't file a complaint. They asked for a review of curriculum.
Right.
So the folks that did that, you know, had legitimate reasons to do that. There was certainly things we probably should talk about. And I, I just hope that the people that were on the committee, um, came there, uh, with an open mind to hear everyone. And unfortunately, decision has, you know, at the end, the decision is made. So, but if the board wants to down the road, look at selecting that group some different way. I, I went well out of my way to make sure I was following the letter of the law on that board policy and selecting those seven folks. If we would have voted, you know, if, when it was on the agenda in November, if the board would have said, hey, we're not ready here to vote on this, let's delay it. We could have done that. It would have kicked the can down the road further. I don't think that would have been positive. So rather than it happen, but definitely is an option.
Well, this was the first program. Um, so I'm absolutely fine with being able to sit down and talk about it and
I did reach out, you know, because our policy, the media specialist who, you know, our media specialist is assigned to us from uh, the ESD. She works with six or eight smaller districts. We give her like 14 days with school year or something. Um, is our amount that we have. She mentioned that our policy is old, it's 2010. I reached out to OSBA and they said that, um, there is an update to ours, but that they wouldn't recommend changing it yet. Uh, in the spring, March or April, they'll be updating it again. So my recommendation, if you want to talk about this, would be maybe we wait till spring when OSBA releases their new one. And then we kind of look at that model. And if the board wanted to make some tweaks or adjustments, we can talk about it then, submit it back to OSBA. Hey, this is what our board wants. What do you think of that?
All right. Any other discussion on the minutes from the last two minutes? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor to approve the minutes. Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries five to zero. Uh, next on the agenda is the enrollment report from
one of us having some technical difficulties. She's texting me, but it looks like.
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Sorry. I'm fighting a cold too. So my voice is going in and out. Okay. I see she has it up now. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Uh, this is our enrollment report as of December 1st. We are down 40 students from our adopted budget for in district enrollment. Uh, elementary level is down 38, middle school is down four and the high school is up two. Um, our out of district placements are up six from our budgeted numbers. So excluding Westland Tech, um, overall, we're down. So excluding Westland Tech, um, overall, we're down thirty-four from our um, budgeted numbers. Um, and that's all I have on the enrollment report unless the board has any questions on those numbers.
I don't think so. Thanks.
Yeah. And I have a financial report as well. All right, this is our general fund revenue and expense report as of November thirtieth. Uh, we started receiving our property tax revenue for twenty-three to twenty-four. Um, we received about five distributions in November. Um, you can see that equaled about three point four million. Um, we have quite a bit more still to come in. Um, we actually had several come in this month, so you'll see that on uh, next month's report. We've received fifty-nine percent of our budgeted revenue. Uh, this time last year, we had received fifty-six percent, so pretty similar. Um, as far as our operating expenses go, we have spent twenty-eight percent. Uh, the same time last year, we were at twenty-nine percent, so very similar. Um, I have started working on the supplemental budget, which I've mentioned a couple of times the last couple of board meetings. Um, I likely will be presenting that in January or February. Um, I still have some more work to do on it, but um, do expect that coming. Does the board have any questions on the financial report?
I don't think so. Thanks, Bona.
Yep.
We do need board action to approve the uh, financial report.
I move that we approve the general fund revenue and expenditure uh, report from November thirtieth.
The motion is second to approve the general fund revenue and expenditure from November thirtieth. Any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries five to zero. Next up is reports, uh, student representative.
Uh, boys basketball had their win at the Road River uh, classic tournament on the night, so they uh, varsity team went all out. They won their two games, which was nice for them. Um, their first home league, the first league game is gonna be the third on a Wednesday, as I say, loose lock. First home league game is that Friday, the fifth, uh, with Questwell. Um, the United Club has finished its clothing drive on Friday. Um, those uh, bins in the club, the foyer were filled like almost every day, which is really nice to see. Um, we'll get those winners back when we get back in break. We'll find out what, how, what we did and what the classes got. And they just wrapped their adopt the family uh, gift donation um, drive. They raised more than um, one thousand seven hundred dollars in gifts and money to benefit families in the district. Um, and then the uh, uh, each theater class presents Oh Promise Me by Pete Williams on January twelfth and nineteenth at six thirty. And January thirteenth and twentieth at one P M. Those doors will open about half an hour before um, the in the theater, general missions, eight dollars, and students and children's are five dollars.
Any questions for Gavin?
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Hermit Education Association of
So one of the things I wanted to touch on, I had the privilege of visiting all the schools on Thursday, December seventh. And I was impressed by all that I saw in each building, especially the routines that all the teachers had in their classrooms. From watching reading groups to practicing holiday songs, working on encouraging one another through long division and other math games. It was really cool to see them give each other some inspiration on how they went about the steps for solving all these problems. Um, designing a travel brochure, even some yoga stretches I saw in the classroom, uh, and then the holiday hustle and P E were a lot of things I saw at the elementary levels. The students were so excited to learn and engage in what they were doing. I even got to teach a little bit of Spanish, of Anita, um, to the first graders. So that was pretty exciting. The middle school and high school, I must say, wasn't as exciting, probably because I'm in the high school building. But I did witness um, the Ellis Island simulation carpentry. They're working on building step stools. Uh, and then um, some of the juniors were reading and acting out of a book in their English class. Uh, and then a couple of things, I just wanted to thank a few folks. Michelle Marshall for all your work with Esser throughout the years, S I A. Uh, you're very creative and you always find ways to get things funded. And all the curriculum that you've worked on math last year, science this year. All the work you do is facilities and maintenance, the awesome grant. And then Michelle Smith, we would like to thank you. You're always super organized, friendly. You deal so much with all the paperwork, new hires, job postings, all the licensure. Help me stay updated on who needs to renew their license soon. And she just does all, so we just would like to thank both of you. One of the things, so along with what Gavin was saying, the holiday kind of happenings, there were a lot of successful events. At the end of January, I was talking to Matt Taylor, our music teacher, and there is a concert on January twenty-ninth. And boys basketball, I must say, I've been to some of the games and they've been so close in a lot of games and they just their record could be so different, um, but they're still working hard and it's been always fun to watch all the winter sports.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is uh, Ms. Marshall.
Yeah, speaking of grants. Um, so the grant agreement needs board approval. It's for the student investment account, which is part of our integrated plan. Um, so we've done, over the last two years, we've done a lot of work. You've had lots of presentations. We already had to do board approval for our application. Then we had to do the O D E um, working together to create our longitudinal performance growth targets that we had to have approval for. And so they finally, the state finally got us our grant agreement, which essentially releases the dollars, but the board has to approve it. So, um, and what the grant agreement essentially just says, we have to follow all the rules of the law to use the dollars. We have our quarterly reports, our annual reports, like what I did in November. I'll have to do it again in November, uh, next split year. Um, dates and timelines, things like that. And then, like, the appendix has our longitudinal performance growth targets, like our goals. It's not, you're not like um, approving the plan or anything like that. We've already done all of that work. It's just accepting the grant agreement from the state.
The motion is second to approve the S I A uh, account grant agreement. Any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye?
And this will be something we have to do every year, just part of it. Um, which is interesting because we don't have to do it for all of our grants, just some of them, but. Yep, I'm just gonna keep going. So here's an, this is another grant. Um, the state released this last year, the information around the framework, the early literacy framework and the Early Literacy Success Act Initiative. And what that is, you can go to the next one, Michelle, is it's funding through O D E for a lot of different components. So the tribe, there's tribal grants, there's community grants, there's birth to five grants, and then what we're focused on is the school district for it. Um, I could see us working and communicating and collaborating with other programs further down, but right now, O D E is really pushing this one right now. We wanna get the money out to the schools. So what it is, is it's non-competitive. We already know the amounts that we get. Um, any school district is eligible, public charter schools are eligible that are elementary. And it's really, the focus is on K two reading. Um, there are some rules around the first two years, using ten percent for fourth and fifth grade this year, or twenty percent. Um, but we're not, we're gonna really try to focus on K two, just stick with that so that we don't have to make adjustments. The application is due the first week back, January eighth. So that's this, essentially what I'm presenting to you is our application. Um, so what we have to do is we have to go through this whole thing and we have to plug in all of our information. So what we can use it for is professional development and coaching, extended learning, which is like after school programs, summer programs, high dosage tutoring. Um, research-aligned curriculum, which is totally appropriate. We already have that. Um, and then literacy specialists, coaches, and interventions. So those are what you can use the dollars for. I can't just go make up something and say, this is what I wanna do. We have to follow these guidelines. So what we did here, this is just kind of like an outline of, um, we had to do a literacy program review. And we had to look at all these different topics. We had to look at student belonging, family and community partnerships, oral language, reading materials, um, foundational skills, writing, reading, comprehension, vocabulary, and background knowledge. We had to look at our core instruction and assessment indicators. And then we had to look at how we're reaching all learners. So lots of, I tried to like pull out some highlights of some of the great things that were, that we already have in place, because fortunately, we do have a lot of great things in place. Couple needs that, you know, I think are just always there is continued professional learning for our I As and teachers, especially brand new staff. Because they're coming out of college, not ready. And teaching kids how to read is really, really hard. It is, it is a science. Um, and then the ability to provide hu- high dosage tutoring, that was the only glaring thing that we saw that we don't do. And if you go to the next slide, I think I did. Each of the topics, regardless if we use our dollars to do these things that are allowable, we have to say how we're doing. So if I say, I'm gonna put all of our money into professional development, I still have to talk about what we're doing for um, high dosage tutoring. And how are we gonna work on that? So we have to say something about all of them. Um, this one was professional development coaching review. So pretty much our goal is to improve the quality of early literacy instruction, really focusing on that core instruction. We have our early release Wednesdays, which we get to use for that, for our K two P L Cs. Um, I talked a little bit, I put up the logo of Easy C B M, which is our primary way of collecting benchmark data and progress monitoring data, so that we we track that. We have multiple meetings a year. We have a research um, based curriculum in Wenders. And then this year, we started working with Oregon Response to Instruction and Intervention as well, to really um, look at our program as a whole and start identifying what we can do. So for extended learning programs, the things that we already have in place, we have some after school programs in place, and we're actually kicking one off here at Elmira in January, that is going to be a K two focus. This is kind of a pilot, just to see how it works. Um, we have done multiple years of summer programs, so we'll continue that. And then if you haven't heard and seen our kids program, it's amazing, and we'll continue with that as well. High dosage tutoring is the one thing that I really felt like we were not tackling yet. And it's interesting because I hadn't really heard of it either in this way, but high dosage tutoring is thirty minutes, at least three times a week um, in a group of three or less by a licensed teacher or a trained tutor. That is just something we don't have in place. Um, we have some one-on-one pullouts, we have some really intensive interventions, but this is a very explicit definition. And so the challenges for this one is the staffing and scheduling within your your day, where your kids that are already struggling are probably being pulled out of the classroom already. And not only do we have to provide this, but we have to track it. So the number of kids we're offering it to and keep their data for their growth and the interventions that we're using. So this will be challenging. But important work. Uh, this is our, kind of our programs in place already. We had to do a curriculum um, assessment inventory. And so our core reading program, which was adopted by the school board, we did a lot of work around our E L A adoption. That was in two thousand and twenty-two. We have a research-based um, benchmarking student growth assessment in Easy C B M, and we've been using that for upwards of ten years. And then on the right-hand side are all of the different interventions that we have. And they're just, they're kind of based on the need, right? So if it's a phonics need, we're gonna look at our phonics ones. If it's a comprehension need, we're gonna look at a different one. And they're kind of based on grade level too. We have a good menu of that. Um, the other pieces that we have to talk about in our application is our communication plan. And both elementaries are, do a really good job of communicating. I think we've got our open houses, we've got newsletters, we have parents square, we have conferences, report cards, family engagement nights, websites. You know, we have lots of ways that we're getting communication out about what they're doing and how they're doing. Um, another requirement is a twenty-five percent match that the district has to match. What's unique about this grant is that it can be any match. It doesn't have to be general fund. It can be um, federal funds, which is what we're using Title One dollars. Because next year, we'll only be able to budget one Title One teacher, which is reading supports and interventions. Um, and twenty-five percent of per time will be working with kinder first and second grade students and data. Um, the big thing is the kind of the budget around this. Um, we have a hundred and nine thousand this year that gets allocated. And O D E, you know, they, it's such a catch twenty-two. They send out these emails on Fridays before break and they're like, hey, congrats, you can access this money. Hey, it's due in three weeks. Um, and you have to have a plan. And so it's really tricky. So this year especially, they're really just telling schools to do whatever you can to access those dollars and get a thing in place. So what we're doing this year is not our plan, because I can't hire a literacy specialist today. You know, it takes time and you know, you, a lot of times, we might have somebody in-house that's interested in really trying to think of the staffing and the process for that. So this year, for twenty-three, twenty-four, the plan is staff professional learning and then extended programs. So really focusing on supporting our after schools, our summer program and our kids program with those extra dollars. Which is great, because with Esser going away, um, and Oregon choosing not to fund summer program, like they did not last year either. It's very helpful to have these extra dollars. Next year and moving forward, the plan is to hire a K two literacy specialist. So either halftime or up to four days a week-ish, and then hire a K two literacy-focused I A. And that will be the framework for our high dosage tutoring, essentially.
Yeah, I A be at both schools.
Yeah, both, both people will be at both schools. And they'll still work super closely with the title teacher that will be at both schools. Um, and the classroom teachers and our data teams and all of that. It'll just be people, two folks that are completely focused on K two reading. Um, there's tons of resources out there, lots and lots of documents. I've been trying to stay as caught up as I can. I've been trying to work with other districts and just seeing what, what are people doing, because everybody's kind of scrambling for this year. Um, some folks are going to try to hire staffing right now, and that'll be interesting. Some folks are buying curriculum because they didn't adopt their E L A on time or at the same time. Um, and then doing their staffing next year, similar to us. We don't need curriculum because we've already done it. We stayed on the timeline. So um, along with this, there's the framework, the O D E puts out the early literacy framework. It's about a hundred pages. Lots and lots of information in there that we'll kind of keep working through. And then I, what's the next slide? Yeah, do you have any questions? But essentially, what I, what I would, what I'm asking the board is to approve this plan. And then what I'll do is I'll take almost every single one of these slides as a question from the application. You have to cut and paste it into a smart sheet and then you submit it. And then um, I have to submit four minutes. And then O D E will come back and say, yes, this this looks okay, where are your budget and activities? And that'll, that's all part of it. Um, and then we'll go from there. And it'll, it's supposedly, it'll be a part of the integrated plan too. So it's just another little piece in there. It should be really fun. Any questions? Yeah, it's exciting. It's, it's exciting work that the state's trying to do. It's just the timing of it's been challenging.
I do. I move that we approve um, the early literacy success initiative. Um, or framework. As Michelle will copy and paste into the smart sheet.
The motion in a second to approve the early literacy grant application and the plan. Any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. And next is the superintendent's report. Superintendent. Um, first off, I want to thank Darcy and the Westland Charter staff for coming tonight and share some of their success stories. Reminder to the board, right, we hired um, uh, OSBA to do the to make a recommendation to the board. So they've been meeting with Darcy. I met with them last week. Um, and Kristin, who she attended, she was on, yeah, she was on earlier. Um, during uh, the church school's presentation. Um, so she'll make a recommendation to the board in January. Uh, and then the board will vote to renew or not. Um, assuming we vote to renew, uh, then Darcy and I'll start to get on the calendar. Um, some bargaining sessions. Um, some bargaining sessions to go over our contract. Does there need to be any adjustments? Um, typically that team from, from the district side will be myself, um, Ms. Bennett as the business manager and one board member. So if a board member is super excited about being a part of that, let me know and you can attend with us. Um, so that's kind of the timeline. January, hear from Kristen, make her recommendation, board decides. Then we go into bargaining, agree on a contract. That will be our new contract, typically their five years, um, starting in July one. Okay, next thing I wanted to touch on, in recent weekly updates, I've kept you in the loop on title one, two and four carryover dollars. So we get this, these grant dollars and then, um, we submit plans and they get approved. Spend those dollars throughout the year. Title one grant money actually operates on a different calendar year. It's September, it's October first to September thirtieth. Once September thirtieth comes, we kind of balance out and you have, in some years when you don't spend all your money, carryover leftover knowledge. In recent years, that's been a little more significant because oftentimes, in particular with title one, we might've had a title one IA job open for a couple of months. Um, so we're, we're saving that salary. So as you recall, a week or two ago, I submitted our title one carryover, um, plan. Uh, for this year, and that was approved. Uh, title four, uh, we only had around four thousand dollars carried over. So one of the subcategories that we can spend title four dollars on is safe schools. Um, well, it's not an issue that we have, but one thing that always is on my mind and concerns me a little bit is when all our power goes out and if our phone lines go down, we can't talk to schools. Our radios don't, I can't talk to them, for example, and I can barely talk to high school. So I reached out to Silky and this morning they came by, uh, around ten and set up, uh, a repeater antenna at the district office. And then got me some higher-end radios and we tested out that system. So, uh, with that setup, uh, that way with the antenna inside the district office, I was able to speak clearly. Um, from the district office to the high school and the district office to Venita was a little bit scratchy, but we could understand each other. But again, that's what the radio inside, with the antenna inside the district office, once I gave her a go and I said, okay, it's a go, write us a quote. Um, they're going to get me a quote for one of these repeaters. Five new radios, so one at each building, one at the district office. And then they'll install with coax cable. We got a spot in the basement to our roof with an antenna on the roof, which will only improve reception a little bit. So bottom line, just a heads up, this will probably be a new tool, our toolbox, hopefully in a few weeks, I'll get this quote, I'll get the grant submitted, it'll get approved. And then we'll get that work done, which will essentially, uh, again, in the case of an emergency where we have no phone or other way to communicate. Uh, all buildings could talk to each other. Just something to be on the lookout. I'll keep you apprised when that happens and gets done. Um, let's see, the Venita, I finalized the members on the Venita principal committee. Uh, right, Ms. Latham's retiring at the end of the year. We, uh, have the job open. It's been open a couple of weeks. I believe it closes January fifteenth. Uh, that group will start together around that time, um, to review applicants for that very important job. Um, lastly, we talked about it a little bit, about to summarize, uh, on the curriculum review. Board met, approved the committee, committee met, they met for almost four hours. Uh, came back with a recommendation to not have any changes, continue using the material. There might've been some, maybe Ms. Mandicar can talk about if you'd like, but it was some talk around, you know, things they can do better and, uh, possibly in promoting, um, early in the school year. Whether it's sign syllabuses or just making sure parents have this information early. Uh, but the recommendation was made to continue. I informed via email, the three folks that had submitted the review included the, um, appeal process. They wanted to pursue that. Um, I haven't heard from anyone that they did, but, um, I told them they would have till the end of the school year to do that. If that takes place, if we do get, you know, this time or down the road, just a reminder, the process is, someone could request to appeal. And in that situation, then the board would have a discussion in a, in a board meeting and the board would vote to, to make a decision based on, um, the appeal. So if we ever got to that point, I'd probably get with Sydney and get all the materials and, uh, things for the board to review. The board might decide, you know, the board would have to decide how they wanted to do that, you know, if you just want to review stuff, you want to hear from people. Um, what that looks like, but that's where we're at in that process. And that's everything I wanted to touch on.
Is, so it's no changes, but what were those conditions?
Um, that we would advertise, um, earlier and, um, not just through the syllabus, but the book would be taught to the class and give opportunity for parents just to know about it ahead of time. And, um, make sure that the parents who wanted to opt out or wanted more information on opting out would know what the, the other, um, assignment the teacher would be.
And I don't know where we went this, went with this or anything, and if this is not the right time to do something though. But I know that we had discussed before about an opt-in slash, no, opt-out slash opt-in.
For a book?
Really for anything, the, the teachers actually send those out a lot. And I love that idea, but my thought with it was that there, if the parents see it and return, then the t- the teachers know about it. But if there was an opt-in, opt-out, then that means that the parent would have to circle it. And it would be the teacher's responsibility to know that, okay, this parent saw this, this is what they said, and we move forward.
Yeah, if you want to touch on Sydney, I don't, um, if what you're asking is, do we want for everything that we're teaching in class, an option to opt in or just maybe specifically this?
Not everything. Only the things that you ask the parents. There, you have a, a process that you ask the parents if they want to opt out of any particular, like, let's just say the book, the parents had, that they had that availability to opt out of their child being in the class, um, special, not special, but, um, sexual education.
Well, you have ability to opt out of anything. So there's not, um, there's, there wasn't a form that we sent home that said opt out. It was just, actually, parents do opt in essentially when they get the syllabus because they're signing a syllabus that says this, this is the things in on it. So we kind of do have an opt-in, assuming every kid returns their syllabus, which is typically their first assignment. Um, but a parent can request, top that of anything, right? We were talking about Christianity and social studies. I want to opt my kid out. Most of the time we're going to say, okay, you know, we're going to defer to the parent. We don't have, the only other things I can think of that we might opt in would be, uh, surveys, voluntary surveys where we're putting out to kids that, um, in those regards specifically, we want to really promote, you know, I want extra communication at the school level, um, letting parents know that this is occurring and they can opt out. So as far as things that are occurring in the classroom, a parent can request to opt out of anything. There isn't, you know, there's not just one, you can only opt out of these things and some others.
Right, right. But the way, the way it works now is that the teacher is seeing a paper that comes back that says they want to opt out.
No.
At least tell me.
You mean like for this book?
Okay, we can take that as an example.
So I assume that just the kid would tell them, hey, I, I want to sit out, or the parent would call, pursue an email. There's no paperwork or not a specific form. Just in the syllabus, hey, here's the materials that we're covering. If you have any questions, reach out to the teacher. I think, I don't know the logistics specifically in this book, but the way I would anticipate it, just be through talking or communication with the kid or the parent that, you know, parent might have a question about the book, they meet with the teacher and the questions are answered and the parent's comfortable, whether it's this book or any other book. Yep, I want my kid to participate, or they might just say, um, no, I want to opt out. But there's not, we're not filling out a form, signing something.
Okay, so then if we wanted to discuss that, is that something we just put on the agenda?
If you wanted to discuss what, charging teachers with creating opt-in and opt-out forms for things?
Well, yeah, that would be the charging the teachers with something that the board would talk about, right?
But it's not, it's not really a board level thing.
It's not a board level?
I mean, there's no policy on it, so unless there's policy suggested, something like that, then, and it's not really, I mean, it's something that the teacher and the minister feel at that, at that level, yeah.
So then what I can do is I can just talk to the teachers, oh, can I do that? Yeah, I can. I can talk to teachers or the administrators and just, okay.
Okay, uh, moving on, superintendent evaluation plan for twenty-three, twenty-four. And so what we have done in the past is we have a, um, a document that goes out to all the board members. Uh, we fill the document out and, um, turn it back into Michelle. She puts it all together and then we discuss it, uh, at, in an executive session. After a business meeting. And so, um, I, that's my recommendation for this year. Let's just do that. If for some reason, after we do that this year and want to, uh, do something different or something, um, more than we would, as soon as this process is over, then I would suggest we either contract with OSBA to come in and do something, um, that they have. We can use their product, um, or we can talk about some other things, I guess, but, um, this is the same one, I think we've been using for a while. And it seems to me, it seems to be a good tool to be able to, I don't know, to superintendent. I know that there's districts out there that do lots of different things.
So, excuse me, would it be too late uh, to talk, to decide that we wanted to do something different at the board retreat in August?
Um, yeah, I would mean discuss it at the retreat. I, if you could, but I think the best would be the spring. I mean, her timelines that she had sent in that email, um, of those documents, it's really about, you know, this, um, late April, May, identifying kind of goals for the upcoming year. Tying your superintendent's evaluation to those goals. Um, so could, could it happen in August if we were ready to go? Yeah, I think it could. Uh, but I think in a perfect world, we should at least have conversations in May, June about what it's going to look like starting July one. But.
So can, Michelle, can you remember to put, put it on like a, a June or July agenda? Just to discuss.
We can, I mean, after we do this one, we can make sure that.
Right.
Yeah, the month we do this, which is typically April, I recommend start talking about it right then. Did people like what we just did?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, but we want to add something or we really want to go this whole other OSBA eight-four service thing.
Right.
Which is the more expensive stuff I sent you.
Right.
And then kind of the middle of the road deal was this targeted book.
So are you suggesting or recommending that we use the format for the exact questions that are listed? And if so, do we need to have Lisa and Caitlin, um, review those before?
Our current one?
Yeah. Are you suggesting just the format remains the same or the question included to remain the same?
I, I mean, I'm fine if the questions remain the same, um, personally, um, but I guess we could, uh, when do we have to, when do we have to have it done by people? I mean, if we, if we wanted to send it out, um, uh, after the meeting tonight to everybody and just review it. That would be.
Okay. Just to make sure in case they have a question before going to a review process.
Yeah.
Yeah, so my, have we had, and I can really need athletes, have we had any pre-evaluations?
More pre-evaluations?
It really just said a pre-evaluation should be done between March and August. And they, they have a whole timeline here.
The OSBA process?
I'm pretty sure it's OSBA.
Well, it's like, we have, because we have used OSBA process in fact.
So this is, um, Casa, which would be the same thing.
No, Casa is, uh, it's not OSBA, but it's probably similar to, it has the name, has.
OSBA and Casa on there. And then what they were saying is that through March and August, we should be doing a pre-evaluation.
That's if you use their program. Yeah, so that's.
So this is the program?
Right, yeah.
That we have to pay for?
Yeah. Yeah. And so I think what they're just saying there is get organized in the spring and summer so that when the school year's starting, you're not doing any of this. We know the goals, we know.
But what we can do is use this material to, to help us through the process.
Sure. And the thing that we're doing right now is very similar. I don't know if you've seen what the board goes through, but some of the questions and categories are very similar to the one in there.
And then, um, as a, do we do check-in meetings?
Um, in the past, we informally, but we haven't scheduled anything formally. We could.
Have we not scheduled anything formally in the past for this year?
Um, well, I would say this year we kind of have because in the past we have not. I think this year we kind of have in that three times a year now, tonight being the first time, we're reporting to you on longitudinal, uh, growth targets. Um, and so you'll get this one this month, uh, March and in June. And one of your board goals was around this topic, um, which, you know, some direct correlation to the superintendent's evaluation should be tied to, uh, student achievement board goals. That's what we're going to be sharing tonight. So I, I guess I would call this a check-in, but.
And then, um, so I, I think what I would like to propose is, um, that we do go this year with what we've had, but not to wait so long and not to wait so long as we were to come together and to look to see what we can do for the next year.
Yeah, as soon as we finish this year in April, I'd recommend in that same meeting, we talk about what next year's going to look like.
So with this, with this year then, it just starts, the process starts in April?
With this year?
No, no.
No, really, that'd be for next year. April will be, so we'll be done with our process in April. For this year, for this school, for this twenty-three, twenty-four, we'll be done in April. And then we'll start discussing for twenty-four, twenty-five in April.
For, for twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four then, okay, when do we start the process?
Well, it should have started in July.
And then if it started in July, are we saying that right now all we have is this?
That's.
Or the superintendent valuation?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So I would propose that we do this for this year, but before, sooner than later, that we would come together to discuss an evaluation for in the future.
We're going to do it in April, right?
Okay, we could maybe do it April. I'll start ahead of time.
Um, any other discussion on that? Right. Um, moving on to discussion items, fifth grade human growth and development. Fifth grade human growth. I had sent you some information a while back from Planned Parenthood, I'm trying to see if I got that email. Um, basically, I want, we, we surveyed our teachers. Jump in if I say anything wrong, Miss Marshall. We surveyed our teachers and basically said, um, after looking around the county, the vast majority of folks either, by folks in another school, for instance, use Planned Parenthood or their classroom teachers teach the unit. I don't know what the breakout was. Majority are using Planned Parenthood or presenters or majority are teaching. Do you kind of recall?
When we asked other districts?
Yeah.
It, it was all over the place. Like some districts hire people to come in, some districts buy a curriculum and their school district nurse does it. Some districts, they, their teachers just to teach it. I, I wouldn't say there was a majority anywhere.
Um, anyway, so art, it was unanimous from our teachers. Anyway, so it was unanimous from our teachers, they don't wanna teach this. They prefer to continue to use Planned Parenthood, I think I sent you the email with Ms. Latham communicating with them where they said. A couple of things, one, they'll modify it to however we want, there were some slides that we were uncomfortable with. They even mentioned, you know, their newest version is more. What's the right term? There's color in the pictures, there's. A diversity of bodies shown, so they could go back, they would even be willing to share their old style version of this. Anyway, so they seem very flexible in regards to that, we do need to lock them down. I also do think, you know, in recent years, we've used them for as long as I've been here, as long as I can recall.
Do the pals refusing to pay for them this year, that's why you're bringing this up?
I haven't heard the pals is refusing to pay, it's definitely not the reason I'm bringing it up. However, what I was going to say, for a long time, they are, first of all, they, they don't. Planned Parenthood gives us a bill at the end of this, but it's like. They know some schools can't afford it, so if we don't pay the bill. I don't think they chase people down, kind of thing. A long time ago, apparently, before my time. Planned Parenthood came, maybe one school got a bill and the other didn't, and the PTA, the principals time with the PTA and asked them to pay for it. And they said sure, and they've been paying for it since. I don't think this should be something that, that our PTAs pay for, it's one, it's a standalone piece, if it's a couple hundred dollars, it's just seems silly to me. So I am recommending that, what I told building principals as well, for twenty four, twenty five, we'll move it into the building and district budget. It won't be, you know, will be something that apparently they haven't paid for over here, I don't think Billy's still here, I think the PTA maybe has paid for it here.
Yeah.
It was just, oh, they have, at both buildings. Anyways, so my recommendation would be twofold, one, that we use Planned Parenthood, we continue to use Planned Parenthood. Two, I'm charging with principals, this last year we didn't have a, a parent night, right? So they'll come out and do a. Planned Parenthood has always been willing, and we've maybe do it once every other year, once every three years. To come and do like a six to seven at night thing with all the materials, drop in workshop, parents can see what's being taught, decide I want my kid to participate or I don't. So going forward, I'm gonna charge the building principals with making sure, we always have one of these parent nights at night. That it gets moved back to the district budget and that we continue to use Planned Parenthood. So school board approves curriculum, I think you should approve our use of Planned Parenthood. Or not, and that's what I'm asking for action tonight. Yes, we're gonna continue to use Planned Parenthood, or no, we're not.
If we don't, what are the other options?
I think the only other option would be to purchase a curriculum and tell our teachers to teach it.
There's no other curriculum that would come and teach it, there's no other organizations that.
You don't have any others, Ms. Marshall?
I don't, but I can reach out, I mean, no other districts have like an out of another.
It was pretty much internal. Internal or Planned Parenthood.
So there are, there's Al, which is our whole life is one, and another one is Dove Medical. Those are just two that I've found. And I have one other resource to look at, but I do have a question, when does, how does that start?
Towards the end of the year, I'm not sure the exact month, it depends on their schedule, so one of the reasons we need to make this decision now is because. As you probably saw in that email, they, they're booking with all their schools now, so they so. Get filled in the, the exact month and week, they be dependent on their availability, but it's typically mid to late spring.
And our whole lives, the teachers would teach that, that's a classroom curriculum that's free to anybody.
But that was in the past, isn't it Planned Parenthood that teaches at now?
Planned Parenthood doesn't teach our lives, our, that was the other one that you said, and what was the other one besides that one?
Is Dove Medical. So as, as far as this is concerned. Can you give me a month that is usually taught in May? And then how far out are they?
Um, I don't know, we're up there, they just, I haven't seen their calendar. Elementary schools will reach out if we're going with them and they'll give us available dates. The elementary schools will pick a week, like Ms. Marshall said, it's typically a May, that would be the week to pick them.
This is actually. The only other thing I would add, just because I, I want it to be clear. Pre COVID, my five years here, we did the parent night every night, and we just took turns with Vinita. So one year it was at Vinita and our families were invited to Vinita, one night, one year it was here, the families were invited here, so that we wouldn't have to do two separate sessions.
And that's what the parent.
Yeah, and then what they do is they come in and they do the whole slide deck with the families, give them all the handouts. And it was always attended.
And then how many years have you used them?
Well, at least eight years. When I came to the district, that I was the principal, I got a bill, and I was like, what, how do we pay for this? And I was told that, you don't have to pay, and I was like, I don't feel good about that. So I was, yeah. Because I didn't have it in my budget, and then it just became practice.
But I think they've been, I don't know if they've been every year, but even in the early two thousands, we were using Planned Parenthood, I mean, it's been twenty plus years.
Right, so that is, that is my concern, I know that personally, I am constantly looking at insurance, medical, all kinds of things, just to. See what is out there, what is new, what are the costs, just to me.
I think some of this will come up too when we do our health. I mean, we're only gonna be hearing more and more about this, health and sexuality standards that are coming out and. Just the health adoption next year, that'll be definitely considered. Right now, the teachers are embarrassed, they don't, they don't, they're in the room and they help facilitate the work, but they don't. Necessarily feel super comfortable teaching the, teaching all about the penis and the vagina, you know, it's. And I, it's hard, and it's hard on the kids, and these guys come in and they're very skilled and they're very experienced in that.
And I definitely got the feeling from the email that they were willing to. Do whatever, basically whatever we ask them to do. Right, Michelle?
Yeah, that was my impression, I, I'm looking up the, I'm, I've never heard of Dove Medical provides the instruction or just the curriculum, that's what I was trying to.
So my understanding is that both these companies will commit.
Okay. I don't think our whole lives is there. That's the one that got that Churchill teacher. No, I would like to.
Yeah, I, I think my only. You know, at a point where we make a motion, I think I would like to look into see what else is out there. And this is just a discussion tonight, so we don't have to take any action.
No, I'm wanting, I'm recommending board action here. So if.
It says discussion item.
I understand.
Okay, and does it say action?
It doesn't say action on the agenda, but that's what I'm asking for, is action on this issue. So if the action is to not go with Planned Parenthood, then. Might lost some direction, but to tell folks.
What's the objection recently?
Well, I have a couple of objections with Planned Parenthood, is that there has been things that have been said about that. Okay, and, and the materials that they're teaching, that is one thing, okay? The other thing is that we've had them for so long, I'm still at, it just makes sense. To look out, look out there and see what else is available. Besides Planned Parenthood, I mean, has anybody ever done that figure?
Well, that's what we just did with an email to all of Lane County. And you wanna summarize again kind of what we found out, Ms. Marshall?
Some elementary, so this, we're talking primarily fifth grade, human growth and development, which has to be a certain amount of lessons, cover certain topics. So there are, I'll think of the examples that I know of, so I don't wanna misquote without pointing it all out. South Lane, their teachers teach it. That's just, they have a curriculum, the teachers teach it.
Okay, so I'm just, but we've already established that the teachers don't want.
Yeah, our teachers.
Yeah, so we just, so what I'm talking about is just.
Look at other people that might come in, so another option, Junction City has a curriculum that their school nurse teaches. But we don't have a school nurse, so that was one idea is like, hey, could we contract with the nurse, try to find something like that, it's just. Hard to do, challenging. We use Planned Parenthood, and I, I know there's at least one of their school district that uses it, in our kind of rural school districts. I wanna say Crosswell, but no, I'll, I can find it, let you know.
And you have this in a list form?
I can put it in a list form, probably.
Was it part of pals pulling their funding because of the?
We, we'll take questions from the, from the public right now. Appreciate your question, but.
I'll make sure to, or hopefully you guys have passed it out.
So Gary's asking for board action tonight, with the board, if there's some of them would like to make a motion to use Planned Parenthood, then. You can do that, or as a board you can decide to. Do something different, you know, options.
So my, pardon me, my concern is that. We put this off. And then decide that. We don't want our whole life because of the. The situation at Churchill. And. Planned Parenthood says, oh, sorry, we're, we're booked. I don't, what are our options?
Um, so like the last person from Laney SC, who's kind of our health and sexuality person in place right now. He said, I don't have a ton of context for this conversation, I'm not sure if you're looking for an external person or agency to offer lessons for growth and development. Whether you're looking for curriculum and training for teachers, in the event this is the latter, his two recommendations, if we went with teachers teaching it, were advocates for youth. Rights, respect and responsibility, and then Oregon DHS, my future, my choice, but that's middle school, so. There's just not a lot. So. Yeah, I was just kind of looking back to see if I can.
So I think this is quite a dilemma here. And. I was under the impression this was just a discussion item, that there was not gonna be any action taken. And I don't know that we're actually prepared to take action.
Well, I am, I mean, we've used Planned Parenthood in the past, they're always continually upgrading, updating their, their presentation. There's multiple opportunities for, or there's an opportunity for parents to view what is gonna be taught. Parents have been knocked out of it. Or you review something. And then, please, no comments from the crowd, please respect that, and then. And, and so I, I would be prepared to make a decision tonight.
So. I'll move that we approve. Planned Parenthood for this year because of. The impending timeline, but that we perhaps revisit. Before December of next year. What our, what our options are.
I was just saying for us to go out and research a vendor source. We don't know them, we don't know their material, we're not familiar with their presentation, we still would need to take. Time to review it, just as we were saying, Planned Parenthood is available to come in and preview their. Presentation with the parents, so I would imagine that we're going into the unknown by saying we're going out there to identify a new source. When we know. Of Planned Parenthood, we have used them in the past, we know they're willing to work with us to adapt to the language or the. Material that we feel comfortable with presenting, so as Andrea said, you know, going with the source that we know. With modification, if we review the material and feel there needs to be modification, then we take that step, at least we know what we're getting into. And then look to ask the superintendent, Michelle, to go out and find and investigate new source. That would be my take on it.
We do have a motion.
I thought.
We do have a motion that's made to adopt the parent, Planned Parenthood for twenty three, twenty four. And then research other options for next year.
I'll second that.
The motion in a second, any discussion?
I, I do have a question. Is this something that happens every year, same time? And is this something that, I, I'm, I'm wondering why are we just hearing about this now?
Seems a little rushed. We have to vote on it right now.
That's what you're asking for.
Right, I know, I'm saying that just kind of the ball was dropped a little bit.
This is the first we've heard about it, we heard when the presentation, maybe I don't know if you guys don't know it yet, but. When the presentation was made and the feedback came in, we discussed. That, right? May have been before you guys, but it was not necessarily new, we knew. It's coming up next year or not, you know, following years, so.
For eight, twenty years, you've been doing this the same time every year?
Yeah, it's part of the Oregon State standards, I think they wait until the end of fifth grade so that the kids are the most mature that they're going to be at the time. No, and by law we have to teach it, right? And you have to have this, not necessarily the exact Planned Parenthood unit, but the standards are there. So essentially, no matter who or what we use, it should teach the exact same standards, it's not gonna be different material. It could be different presenters, but it will be the same material too. So, and, and again, I would say, the only other thing I would say, in that my five years here, doing it every single year. We never had an issue, not one, this is the first issue that I can think of in regards to Planned Parenthood, we had parents that would come and watch. They had, we had parents that would opt out their kids, because they just felt like they talked about that at home and they didn't want their kids to feel embarrassed, their kids didn't wanna do it. Or, or we have parents that would come and they were like, wow, I am gonna make my kid do it, it, it kind of reassured them, so it's kind of. But the standards and the laws are the same around what we're teaching.
So I, I'm actually good with all that, I'm still at the point where we're just hearing about this now. As a, as a school, as a new school board member, you know, so, so Andrea, did you know that this was coming up?
Yeah.
Cause you guys have been here for a while.
The, I would say that. In my time on the school board, or as a superintendent, this has never been a board topic, we've never talked about it. So it's just, I assume twenty years ago, when we went with Planned Parenthood, some school board a long time ago said, yep, we're gonna use Planned Parenthood. We don't, haven't brought it back every year, the only reason I'm bringing it back is there was some mistakes happened last spring, right? What's that?
What were those mistakes? As the board is in your board when you're asking them to approve something, those mistakes were they.
Excuse me, please stop, please, please, please stop. Please respect the.
Child's pleasure. There's a reason pals is paying for it, I'll stop talking, but you need to be forthcoming with your board, why, why it's back here? It's because pals is paying for it.
It's absolutely not true, so at least if you're gonna speak, speak the truth. The reason I'm speaking here has nothing to do with any pals, then maybe pals did say I wanna.
Aren't you asking for funding?
I, I have no idea. We're asking for anything. But the reason it's on this board agenda, like I mentioned, we never, each year, I didn't come to the board and say. Who are we gonna use for to teach the standards that we have? It's just, I assume it's proved long, long ago, this is just something that we did, but last year, mistakes were made.
Right.
Right, this teacher sent out a wrong link to the old stuff's curriculum, so a parent that was interested last year could have went onto that link and said, read everything. And it wasn't. And it wasn't the presentation that they were doing. It was the previous, previous years being updated. Definitely was. Act like it's nothing that parents shouldn't be worried about.
Please stop making comments, okay? It, I mean, I know it might be difficult, but please stop.
There, we have received, um, an email communication that Principal Latham sent to. Planned Parenthood, thank you.
We reached out to Planned Parenthood.
And, and so we, we are all informed about what the mistakes were.
Oh, good, we're just running it back.
No, we're not, we're.
We're taking the appropriate steps and we're meeting with and speaking with the leaders of the organization to say, hey, these things took place. It was not appropriate. We would like you to correct it. They're, they've agreed to work with us and correcting it. And it doesn't matter if it's Planned Parenthood or Johnny's Deli. It could be anyone who sent the wrong link. So let's talk to the spot. Is the material appropriate? Is the presentation that will be sent out to the students and, and the parent appropriate? Will the parents have a time to sit with the material and understand whether or not they want to opt out their kids? Those are the things that we're concerned as board members. As parents, we are concerned about material. So the material is being presented. You're going to be given an opportunity to meet and, and review it. So where is the objection? Where is objection, where is the objection to listening to the material that will be presented? And then make a decision. Where is that? Why is there an objection to that?
Exactly what we did last year. You showed the parents one thing, okay? You're right.
We acknowledge it and we as board and superintendent, us taking appropriate steps.
So we're going to take.
To address it.
But we're not going to win. So you have to think, so does he have a motion and we have a second? Is there any more discussion by the board?
I'm still discussing.
What do you have? What is your discussion?
My discussion is. My question was. If this is something that action is needed. Then I have not looked at. Their curriculum and I understand.
It's not their curriculum, it's the state's curriculum.
Right. And I understand Gary, what you're saying. Um, about how this is just coming to the board this year and everything. I absolutely understand that. But while we're here, okay, I mean, if we're going to approve something, then I would actually have to look at. I, I, I understand that they've been here forever and I'm going to, I, I'm still going to vote. But I would just like to know how, how this happened. Yeah, I really would like to know how this happened.
How, what happened?
How, how, how it has happened that, um, we're being asked to take action on something. That's on a discuss, and do we take action on this discussion items?
We've been asked, yeah.
Lots of things we take.
There's been a motion in a second, so we have to take action.
Right, and it doesn't, okay, and so.
The reason it's coming to you now.
Okay.
We, we knew this was an issue in the fall. So over the last month, charged elementary principals were talking to the teachers. So they did that, got that information back a few weeks ago. Um, told Lisa to reach out to Planned Parenthood, got, we got all that information, everything that I could present today. So I'm comfortable going ahead with Planned Parenthood to share it with the board. Um, share what the teachers thought and the board can make the decisions on. If the board doesn't want to make that decision and wants to go a different path. Certainly could do that.
So I'm just trying to understand things here. So discussion items, they can be put action on.
Sure.
Okay.
Just like items under reports or items under, uh, monthly items where we take action on Juana's business. You know, our general fund expenditure report. There can be. To my knowledge, any, any spot on the agenda, we can ask for action. I mean, it's, it's reasonable. Like I said, it's reasonable. Um, if you don't, if a board member, it's reasonable to me for a board member to say, well, I want to see everything. I want to see Planned Parenthood's presentation. But that's case, I'll have them send it to you. What I'm telling you is our teachers and our administrators looked at it, that's what they want to go with. That's what we're bringing it to you, just similar to we would in, you know, with math curriculum or science curriculum. I'm not going to bring you the math books, you know, K-12 for you to review. We have groups go through this stuff. They're making a recommendation to this.
So I just want to, so I don't know if this is just something. Going through the agenda, when it was under a discussion item, I really didn't pay a whole. Lot of attention to it, like I did the other items that had action. So I thought that we would just be discussing this and then we would move on. If we, if we went ahead and wanted to take action, it would. It would be where we'd be taking action next month or something like that. So I think it doesn't matter what the topic is or what the subject is. I just want to clear up and be clear, be clear, clear about. This process here. So what I'm understanding now is that any item can be under action. That's on the agenda.
Yes, I mean, there are some items that say board approval needed right next to, just as guidance. Um, but yes, and we can. Anything that's on the agenda.
So do you understand my dilemma though, looking at it as a discussion item? It was really just a discussion item where there's other items on there that says action is needed. Did you?
Yeah.
Do you understand what I'm saying now?
I can see where you might be confused by that.
Gary, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay, so is there anything that we can do so that we don't have this confusion again? Or is it just that any item on the agenda can have action that night?
Right. I think, I mean, I'm open to anything. Might be something we reach out to OSBA about. I think the, the danger of that is. Uh, on one side, we make a little, a board member might know, okay, these are the six things we're taking action on. We're not taking action on anything else. But then though, you couldn't take action on anything else. Lots of things come up in board meetings. Whether it's other items or discussions where there, there might be some need to take an action on an issue, but. I can reach out to OSBA and see what they, what they advise. Our, we haven't been, our practice has been, um. You know, not to have a specific board action section.
Right.
Uh, I, I never really see that, no, except for a consent agenda. That's the only time I've ever seen a specific.
So.
Spot on the board, where you.
It does look like Gary talked about it on Friday, this Friday update.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, when I say, granted, it's only a few days ago, but on my Friday update, when I knew this was going to be an issue. But you know, we're going to be looking for board action tonight to approve this. Um, it's not the end of the, the, the only. Well, I guess if we were putting it off to January, which is fine with me, I just want to have a clear picture of what you want me to do between now and January.
Right.
To make a difference, you know, and I don't know. Planned Parenthood certainly some, you know, they might limit when they can come to us a few dates. I doubt, although I don't know, I doubt we would go to Planned Parenthood in January and they'd say, oh, we're all full up, we can't come. I don't think that's the case. Anyway, so again, my only caveat is if we're not going to prove this tonight, I want a real clear picture of what you want me to do over the next. Three or four weeks before our January meeting. Because the recommendation from the teachers and the principal is still going to be to use Planned Parenthood. That is a nice change.
All right, need for the discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to zero. All right. Three to two, I'm sorry, three to two. Motion carries three to two. Um, ten B is update on. Longitudinal performance growth targets in the school board.
So this is the item we've talked about back in August and I will. Turn it over to walk us through the slides to Ms. Marshall.
Okay, so our longitudinal performance growth targets, we developed, uh, co-developed our team with ODEC. And just go ahead and go to the next slide. I'll, I'm, there's a lot here because we wanted to use this kind of as our framework. Essentially, this first slide is just the three board goals and the action plans around each of those. We're really focusing on goal number two, which is the three years of presenting, um, on our longitudinal performance growth targets. Go ahead. So focus one number two is that the Furniture District Board will use data to identify and prioritize student needs and hold themselves accountable for meeting all student learning expectations. By monitoring the progress of the district goals. Um, our mission statement and a lot of the work that we've done around, over the last couple of years has focused on relationship rigor and relevance. Um, the action plan I, that you guys developed with this is that. Um, the board collaboratively with the superintendent and key stakeholders will create a monitoring plan. Um, our monitoring plan is presenting to you, each of the buildings monitor each of these performance metrics. In lots of different ways, so I'll share some of that. Um, the board will calendar the minimum at least three sessions and we're doing that in. December, March and June, and then I'll kind of help coordinate the presentation and share out everything that we're doing. Um, the biggest thing to understand is growth over time. So I don't want to spend a ton of time on this, but I do want everybody to understand. Um, kind of in that right-hand corner, it talks about the top ten percent of school districts in Oregon and how much they're growing. And so ODE really use that as, um, one of the, one of the primary factors for considering where we start. Over our five-year trends, our averages, and then where we want to go over the next four years. So if, like the top one says, regular attenders, the top ten percent of school districts in the state of Oregon are only growing by one point two percent. So if I went out and I said, oh, well, our goal this year is eighty, next year we're ninety, next year after that we're a hundred. ODE would come back and be like, yeah, that's not realistic, it's not attainable. You need to compare kind of where you're at. So go ahead. Um, here's just some of our district-wide data. We, at this time, we had twelve hundred and ninety-eight students. And really the integrated plan and all of these targets. We're, we're looking at our entire district, which is our baseline, but we're also really looking at our focal groups. So a kid may fall into one focal group or they may fall into four. So those numbers are just looking at just those focal groups, how many students. But when you look at our one-to-one, at least. Um, eight hundred and eleven of our twelve hundred and ninety-eight students fall into at least one of the focal groups. Which is, um, tribal and indigenous students who experience disabilities, bilingual students, students navigating poverty, homelessness and foster care. It's, it's pretty incredible. Um, so go ahead, that's about sixty-two percent of our kids, so it really does impact everybody, um, to some degree. This is our equity lens that we've been using and working with over the last couple of years. Our district equity team. Um, took our equity lens tool and created it into a, a more user-friendly document that we could access. So, um, building principals use these at staff meetings, we have them out at different meetings, you'll see them on your table in front of you. Just really trying to keep some of that in front of us. And what our equity team members have been doing is. For a few minutes at every staff mem, meeting each, over the last few months, they've talked about a couple at a time. And then here in January, we're going to come together as a group and we're going to do some scenarios. And really have people focus on what, what, what are the adverse impacts if we make this decision? Or if this thing is happening, what are some, some of the ways that we have it? There's no right or wrong answer to some of these huge topics, right? That you really need to think through. Are we, are we making sure that it's sustainable, right? We could do anything right now, but can we do that for the next five years? Are we looking at causes? Are we looking at the stakeholders involved? So that's just kind of an ongoing tool. So we get to our first metric, which is K-12 regular attenders. I don't know if you can make it any bigger, Michelle, just so everybody can see, but if you can't, that's okay. Um, so K-12 regular attenders, that means that you're at school ninety percent of the time or more. So right now, we've had sixty-some school days. If you've missed more than six days, you're chronically absent. It doesn't matter if you were elk hunting, it doesn't matter if you had COVID, it doesn't matter if you had the flu, it doesn't matter, you went on vacation to Hawaii. You're chronically absent, um, or very close to it. So, but as you get more school days. Like my son, who was out of school elk hunting, now that he's back, as long as he doesn't miss a bunch more days, he's going to be fine because. That builds over time. Um, the other data point that we look at is average daily attendance. So let me see how much I want to go into here. So our, what we did. In trying to not present way too much, but I have so much more if you want, is instead of showing like. All five years, I broke it to our five-year average or trend data. And then our targets for this year and next year. But we actually had to make targets for the next four years. And then I tried to put in some things that, you know, really impact this kind of stuff and what, what we're trying to do in the buildings. So our regular attenders for that first group in that one with the purple bar is our combined focal groups. So that's those eight hundred and eleven kids that fall into something. But then we also have just our regular attender as a district. So you can see our kids that are falling to those vocal groups, they have lower. Levels of attendance, right? There, more of them are chronically absent because they have different barriers. Um, and so what we have to do at, at the state level, and this is part of our integrated plan, is we have to have, if you look to the yellow box. We have to have growth goals for our baseline students, which is everybody, our stretch goals, which is everybody. That means like, if you put all of your time and energy into this, where would you get? And then our regular tenders for our gap closing target, that's our focal group kiddos. So you can see, it's like, for our, our baseline, we're trying to get up by point five percent. And our stretch, we're trying to go by one point five. Remember that top ten school districts are going one point two. So that's a little bit ambitious. And then our focal, our, our focal group kids, what you're trying to do is by the end of four years, we had to close the gap. So our regular attenders are up here, our gap kids are down here and you have to like try to close that in. Um, so what we're doing is admin are reporting, they're really focusing on this in their buildings, they're getting some funds to work on it. We sent home the district's calendar magnets to every kid, every family, they're still accessible. We're doing nudge letters. Um, we purchased Oregon Data Suite, which was about ten thousand dollars. Using, um, S R dollars and then going to use S I A so that we can track attendance every day by building. Like we can see who it is, what it is. Um, just really trying to get that urgency of coming back to school every day. And they're doing lots of fun, different things in each building too. So, um, this is by building, is this next one, if you want, if you can like scroll sideways a tiny bit so people can see. What you can do is, um, it kind of goes E E S, V E S, F R M S, options, high school and then high school options. And that first percentage box, well, the first box is enrollment number, how many kids are in their program. Second box is their average daily attendance. That means if you take all two hundred and seventy-eight kids. At E E S, ninety percent of the kids are there every day or are coming to school on any given day. But only seventy percent are coming more than ninety percent of the time. Um, and that changes, that's not even accurate today, like because our number, because we've only been in school sixty-some days. One day can help a kid not be chronically absent, right? Because if they were absent six days, well, give them two more school days and all of a sudden that calculation has now been adjusted to, well, six and a half days to be chronically absent. So as long as they keep coming back to school, even though they've missed because of X, Y and Z, they can get out of that chronically absent. Um, some kids, you look, you'll pull up their thing and they miss every Thursday and Friday, every Thursday and Friday. That kid probably won't come out of the chronic absence unless we have a more targeted approach. The kids that went to Hawaii, the kids that got COVID, the kids that were hunting, they're probably going to be okay. And our building principals are able to pull those reports. And they do, and they look at the kids and they're like, okay, yep, that one I'm not worried about. Yep, this one I'm going to watch a little bit closer because. There is a pattern of behavior. It's not just a one done thing. Um, so now if you'll scroll back to the right, as a district, this notebook, sorry. Um, as a district, just looking at that kind of umbrella overview. Uh, on any given day, about ninety percent of the kids are here. That's, that's actually really pretty good. Um, but our regular attenders is sixty-nine point one seven. And we're kind of, what, one thing that I'm trying to like push out from ODE right now is where are we in comparison to every other district in the state? Right? Because I have some local data and compared to our state average and local average. We're ahead in almost every category except for one. But what I want to know is, so I get that we're ahead of local and state, but I want to know where the top ten percent of schools are. Like who are they and what are their percentages? So I'm working on trying to get all that. Um, the next metric is third grade ELA, so that's S back or O S A S, um, used to be CAT test. Um, the next metric is third grade ELA. So that's S back or O S A S, um, used to be CAT test. It's kind of your summative end of the year testing. They sit down, they log in. They have, spend an hour, two hours on the computer and they do all of this work and then we get this data back. Um, this one's tricky because I won't be able to give you a ton of information until May on this one, right? Because it's summative. But what we'll track along the way is their easy C B M benchmark and progress monitoring data. So that's what the teachers use between now and the end of the school year to make sure their kids are on track. Um, this one, our third grade, our focal groups were 38.3%. Our district was 51.3. And there's our state average was 47% and the county average was 47.6. So, um, as a district, we're, we're doing okay. We, of course, we want to do better. Everybody wants to do better. It's really about preparing students, but not testing them to death, but making sure that they have the skills that they need. Um, I think we'll see growth in this area just because of the work that we're doing with Oregon RTI and this new funding from ODE with the early literacy. That's gonna impact this greatly. Our goals are going up by 2% ish in each one. Um, so this slide is, talks about our easy C B M data. So for easy C B M, they take multiple assessments. If I'm a third grader, I take, um, and you'll some. You do benchmark three times a year, fall, winter, spring. But between those things, you do progress monitoring. And what you do is you take a combination of assessments, comprehension, vocabulary, passage reading fluency, for example, at third grade. And then depending on how you score on those, maybe I do really well on vocab, but terrible on comprehension, but great on passage. That determines my risk level. If I do great on all of them, I'm in the low risk, right? I'm, I'm doing good. If I do great on two, but really bad on one, I might be in some risk. Kiddos that aren't reading are those high risk kids. That they're really struggling. They're, they're struggling in all of the areas. Um, so, and tho- those percentiles are based on national norms. And so what the district does is we set where our high risk, summer risk and lower risk are. And we follow kind of the state average for that. That's pretty much what a new district does is around this zero to 15th. Some people do zero to 10. Um, 16th to 30th, some people do 20th to 35th. And what you try to do is you want to make sure that anybody that falls into a risk level, you're able to serve. Whether in the classroom or in intervention or after school program or high dosage tutoring. Um, this one, so another metric is ninth grade on track. Ninth grade on track is, um, the percentage of students earning at least one quarter of their graduation credits by the end of the summer following their ninth grade year. So essentially six credits. We're semester. So at the semester here at the end of January, we want to see kids with at least three credits. If they got two credits and failed their math. They might still be on track by the end of the year because we're just looking at a snapshot of time. They're not, they're off track right now, but they're not off track. State level wise. We have until the end of the summer, their ninth grade year. But, um, again, as a district, we're at 77.2%. Our five year average for our focal group kiddos is 69.4%. And we're trying to raise those. We're, this is definitely an area that we're being more ambitious. Um, we're really hoping that our kids are getting back into the flow of things and we're really setting them up for that. The high school, I went to a a committee meeting last week, they sit down, there's all the ninth grade teachers. And they just walk through every kid that has a D or an F. What do we need to do? How can we help this kid? What is the plan? Who's talked to their parents? What's going on? So they've got a lot of things in place. Um, it's just kind of keep working on it. And so this is our, kind of our current data and what they do. It's, this is another one that's hard to pull because you're looking at the data on a day to day basis. So right now, um, 19 of our 104 students have two or more Fs. Which if we pulled that data right now and had to give it to the state, that means 19 of our 104 kids would not be on track. Um, so we're about 81% on track, which isn't terrible. It's obviously we want it to be better. Um, the semester ends on January 25th. So what the team did that I met with, I just observed, I didn't do anything. I just watched them do their magic. They kind of talked about different areas that maybe Sid is got an A in P E, but she's failing English Language Arts. So P E teacher was like, hey, how about Sid goes and during, instead of coming to P E every day, it's gonna hurt that P E grade a tiny bit. But she could go sit in and get an extra dose with you. And the teachers were amazing, like they were really trying to work it out. Um, they have a ninth grade success class. Every ninth grader has to take a future success class. And trying to think if there's anything more that I would want to share there. Uh, you know, they, they look at more than just the grades. They look at attendance. They talk about effort. They really tried to think of supporting ideas. And I will say, most of them thought that these numbers would be a lot better at the semester too, because they had the percentages in there. So maybe I had a D, but I was at 59% or 69, you know, I was, I was right on the cusp of, well, Michelle just would turn in another sign. It, she'll be okay. Um, so they had all of that for all the grades. For each freshman. Uh, the next one, four year graduation. So this is another one. I'm, I'm not sure why I had the state and district averages and some of these and not all of them. So I'll go back and see if I can find all that. Um. So historical data, our four year graduation for the district is 88.7. And state average is 80.7, the county average is 75 something. So we're doing really well in this area. Um, but our trend went down a tiny bit, so you know, we also have some ground to make up, just getting back to where we were five years ago. We have two full-time counselors at the high school. We have credit recovery and we have the options program as well that helps with this. And then five year completion is our students that may not have walked with their classmates, may, may not have graduated on time for years. But that they came back over summer or did one more kind of year and were able to finish up. And we are in the top 10% in the state in this area already. And the only reason I know that is because when we were making our goals, we were in the 92.75. And I was like, if I keep trending by the percent that you're telling me. You're telling me that we will be at 100% here in a few years. And, and they're like, well, you guys are in the top 10% of the state. And that's where it got me into. Well, if you can tell me that one, why can't I know the others? Um, so I'm still working through that, but this one, we're doing it really good. And it's really not a ton of kids, but it's really making sure that those kids that are close get there. Um, this one just breaks down our, kind of the activities and strategies and the different things that we're focusing on. Really attendance at every level, um, PLCs, we have, we're outside of the middle school, which we just can't get a counselor in there. There's not very many to be found and they're hard to get. Um, outside the middle school, we do have counselors at each elementary and two at the high school. Elementary is also doing the Oregon Response Intervention. Um, six, eight, they have, they're working on positive school culture, ongoing professional learning. High school counselor check-ins, attendance activities. I think our next steps are really keeping these goals in front of the buildings and the admin. And supporting the teachers. And, um, one big thing that I would like to do, every building does something to look at kids that are struggling, regardless of it's this metric or not. But I really like a more systematic protocol tool so that I know that we do this at the middle school, we do this at the high school, we do this at both elementaries. And I, I do feel like that's something that we could just build on. Everybody's doing something, but it's kind of their own version. Um, the other thing is just really working with our professional development learning. And then engaging our families and community members, um, definitely around things like attendance. And sometimes that helps and sometimes it doesn't. My son's a senior. His grandpa's 75. He's going elk hunting. I'm sorry, but he will be there every other day if possible. Um, what does all that mean? So what, what's happening is we're collecting a ton of data and really monitoring a lot of different things to help guide our decision making. And where we, where we have these activities. Um, kind of like what I was saying, working to create that systematic process for what we do, that multi-tiered systems of support. And then we're just really asking our administrators to be intentional leaders, get into those classrooms. Work with those teachers on building relationships, encourage that environment so that our kids want to come to school and that they want to do their best work. Lots of other additional documents. So if you guys have the PDF. A lot of those are things that I've already presented, so I just wanted to put them back in, in front of folks if they wanted to see them. Um, that was super fast and there's a lot of information in there. And we probably cut the slides up in half because Gary just kept saying, that's a lot. It's a lot of information, but the schools are doing a lot of really great work. And so are the teachers and the kids.
Just really briefly, I'll summarize. So, you know, we have these five areas. The four year and five year graduation rate, we're not really gonna have that data till summer. So we'll, you know, just keep in loop all the things we're doing on that topic. Ninth grade on track. While we showed our shirt, current metric as of this last week, how many kids have Fs, they're not earning credit until that January 25th day. So when we next go over this in March, we'll be able to show clearly this is how many ninth graders in the first semester pass six classes and earn three credits. Maybe I only passed two and a half. Well, then I'm not on track. But because we have second semester, if they passed all their classes, three and a half credits second semester, they could still get the sense. Any kid that, for example, earned two credits or less first semester. They're not gonna be on track at the end of the year, even if they pass anything, but we also saw summer school. Where we could say, hey, Gary, you never could pass Algebra I. Uh, let's try again this summer. I can earn half credit. So I can even still add some, some kids over the summer. So ninth grade on track will have a little more solid data at the end of the first semester. Um, third grade reading, again, Michelle shared with you easy C B M data where our kids are testing. That's really all around state testing. So we're not gonna have that till the junior port. And then attendance, you saw on the slide, our goal is like 74%, we're at like 69. So we hope that, you know, more school days go by, there's lots of things happening at the schools, letters home, talking to kids, uh, um, falls typically, um, you know, hunting season, definitely November was not a good month. Uh, Thanksgiving week when the elementary school is out. We have terrible attendance at the middle school and high school because those, some of those kids are watching younger kids. Those two days are very bad attendance days. Like Michelle said, right now, we're at about day 65. So if I've been gone seven days, I'm chronically absent. We have 184 days in the school year at the secondary level. So I would need to be gone 19 school days over the course of the year to be chronically absent. If I hit June and I only missed 18 days. That's under 10% and considered a regular tenor. So, um, while 69% isn't where we want to be, I do believe that will continue to go up. We'll get to 74, I'm not sure. Uh, but as Michelle said, every building's doing a lot of attendance. You know, there's only so much we can impact. It still comes down to uh, you know, a kid and a parent then go making a decision like them in school. And sometimes things happen. Kids get chronically sick for a couple of weeks or grandparent passes away, they need to go on a trip and, you know, we're never gonna have uh, zero kids that are chronically absent. So that's just a quick summary of the five. Um, and just note that a couple of them, we really won't have final date on till, till summer. Any questions? Moving on to personnel, we have, um, two items that we need to take action on, a resignation and retirement.
I moved that we accept the resignation and retirement as listed. One second.
A motion of second to accept the resignation and retirement as listed. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Me and both. Motion carries five to zero. And then just for information, we do have a few, a couple resignations, coach. Round famous person, then then retire. Some assistant track. All right, any late or closing items?
I do have a question. We have, um, item 10 B was the school board goal, so are we gonna take that until next month?
That was, we've already done those goals along lines of the lead of the performance growth targets, so that they're combined with that. That's what. And this was just really about the, one of your goals, one of the school board goals was on the hearing this presentation three times. That, that was the reference. Uh, moving on to upcoming events, uh, it's obviously winter break now, January 15th is Martin Luther King Junior Day. Uh, I don't believe there's a, an hour at elementary P T A made in December, but that's not happening. Uh, we need elementary, ukulele residency, uh, in January 2nd and 23rd. Pals meeting on the 3rd and the magician that looks like on the 12th of January. Uh, the high school, we've got varsity basketball tournament, Regis High School, so, so tomorrow and, and, uh, Wednesday, uh, then wrestling at Young Hill Charlton on the 4th, varsity basketball, which is the final 12. And then we have the U G S theater presentation that we heard about earlier on the 12th and 19th. And also the 13th and 20th. Hearing no objection, we adjourn.
I would like apologize to the board for interrupting. If I would have known appropriately what was on the agenda tonight, I would have spoke about Planned Parenthood. Gary was not forthcoming. There was many complaints made last year about the wrong thing being sent out and what was shown in fifth.